We are live. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting's order and welcome each of you that joined us either by social media or being here in person. And we thank you for your interest in education of our children here in the Garrett County School System. And please note that all board members and superintendent are present. At this time, if you would join me for a moment's silence. Thank you if you're able, if you're staying with me, it's a pleasure to be in this line. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, delighted to see you. Item C is to Dr. Jenna, I'll take the most.
I'll make a motion for Dr. Jenna.
Dr. Lamb, make your motion, do I have a second?
A second.
You stay for a second, it all in favor, let me know whether they can. Item A is adopted, item two is communications. And to begin with, item A is recognition. And we start off with the Garrett County Office Equipment Support Staff of the Month.
So Garrett County Schools' Daniel Office Equipment Support Staff this month is Ms. Carolyn Sparks from Camp Dick Robinson Elementary. We're so proud to honor Ms. Carolyn Sparks as the Support Staff of the Month. Ms. Sparks takes care of CDR as if it was her own. She pays attention to all details and keeps the school looking amazing. As part of the school family, she is involved in the events that occur throughout the school calendar and assists in making sure the school is ready for any special events or guests. She is a team player and lends a helpful hand in any way that she can, always putting students first. If she sees a student that's upset or having a rough day, Ms. Sparks takes the time to give them a hug or sit with them during her break. Ms. Sparks takes great pride in her daily tasks and lives out the CDR vision of every bobcat every day. We're so thankful to have Ms. Carolyn Sparks on our team at CDR, and congratulations, Ms. Sparks. Next is recognition of the Garrett County Schools' Quinterbank Teacher of the Month. And our Teacher of the Month for March 2023 is Mr. Lewis Kluschner from Lancaster Elementary School. Mr. K is the epitome for Teacher of the Month. He strives to make a positive impact on his students and to teach them to have the same impact on their communities. Additionally, he truly believes in being a lifelong learner and continually works to find instructional ways for his students to achieve their goals. He has high expectations for his classroom and at the same time develops genuine relationships so students enjoy a productive struggle in their educational journey. He's eager to take on additional tasks, and you never hear him say anything negative. He's quick to engage all his students and staff with a goof morning and ask about their days. His professionalism is impeccable and truly appreciated. Congratulations, Mr. Kluschner. Next are Garrett County Schools' Farmers National Bank Students of the Month. And first is from Camp Dick Robinson, Jackson Estes. Jackson is a preschool student at CDR, and he comes in the door each day with an excitement to learn. He's always willing to participate and gives his best effort 100% of the time. He's a great listener, asks great questions, and has the best sense of humor that makes every situation fun. He is always kind and helpful to his classmates and teachers, and we'd like to congratulate Jackson on being the CDR Student of the Month. Next from Lancaster Elementary is Alzerian Jones. Alzerian is a fifth grade student at Lancaster Elementary whose growth and maturity leadership skills and academics this year has been astonishing. He's been a great model of balancing work and fun as we try to teach all students about the habits of success, work before play. He's such a loyal friend and demonstrates remarkable empathy for others. It's not uncommon to find Alzerian in the cafeteria buying snacks for his friends or offering to pay for things when they don't have money they need. Alzerian has an impeccable sense of fashion and is always dressed to impress. We're very proud of his hard work and accomplishments and are so excited to see what the future holds. Congratulations. Next from Paintlick Elementary is Jackson Teeter. Jackson is a third grade student at Paintlick Elementary. Sample of our pride and expectations. First, he always treats everyone with kindness. Jackson has tons of friends and he's nice to everyone in third grade. Next, Jackson shows self-discipline. He will always think before he acts, which has resulted in him having no negative dojo points so far this year. Jackson has worked really hard this year and made a ton of growth in math and reading, and we can't wait to see what else he can do. Congratulations, Jackson. From Garrett Middle School is Luke Richmond, but I don't think Luke is able to be here tonight, so we'll make sure he gets his recognition. And then from Garrett County High School, Alexis Cordova. And Alexis isn't here, so we'll make sure he gets his taken care of too. Those elementary kids really want to be here, so we appreciate that. We have one final recognition tonight, so let me read some information for you. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955. Approximately 1.5 million school students enter the program each year. Of the 1.5 million entrants, some 50,000 with the highest PSAT NMSQT selection index scores qualify for recognition in the program. In September, these high scores are notified through their schools that they've qualified as either a commended student or as a semifinalist. 16,000 students are then notified that they qualified as semifinalists. And in February, 15,000 are notified that they have advanced to the finalist standing and receive a certificate of merit. So if you do your math real quickly, you know that that's the top 1% who get this recognition. We're proud to say tonight that Abby Keith has accomplished each of these milestones and has been named a National Merit Scholarship finalist. We welcome and congratulate Ms. Abby.
Thank you all, congratulations to all of you. And item B is site-based decision-making, but I trust my fellow board members have had an opportunity to go over each one of these. It's very good to have you all these comments, and if you don't have any other comments, it's important. That brings us to the evening, the afternoon, and first of all, so I'll let you take also that number one.
So you have attached, or in your packets, this, my updates for each of the citizens you've asked me to work on, all the technical questions that you have. For those who are joining us virtually, they have access to those. So we have construction update from, I guess, both guys, maybe.
Just me now, I guess. Any more done? Have you been able to drive by site here lately? We've moved quite a bit there. There is still, there's the operation of undercutting the lower area there preparing for a little bit, I guess, the major spill of the site. We do have the blasting contractor scheduled to be on site within the next week to start drilling and we're here to start blasting, getting the shot rock to begin our fill operations. That's going to be the majority of the work probably for the next month, month and a half, spraying that 15 acre foot fill up in that lower portion of the property. So in the meantime, we're, when the weather allows, we're able to cut more other places and kind of get a jumpstart on the other areas. But moving on to the next phase, we had a pre-bid this morning, had a packed charter for contractors interested in bidding the job, so that was good news for us. Right now, the job's scheduled to bid out in a bit, so we're seeing a lot of comments from contractors, so that's good news, and you know, there's people looking at it. So excited to get that bid out. Touching basic contractors every day, trying to draw as many people as we can, so that's all I have.
May I ask you, let me ask you a question, we're talking about beginning to do the blasting. Is there any possibility that influences any of the other sinkholes that might already be there? Is that a loaded question?
Well, there, I mean, I guess there is always a possibility, I guess, but I know there are two sinkholes that have been definitely drawn that we are going to remediate prior to probably the blasting taking place and the filling operations taking. We are, I, you know, where.
So best answer I can give to that is, we know that when you built the school originally, there were some sinkholes that show have already remediated. We identified two additional sinkholes this quarter were taken into place, and we've built in a budget to remediate up 10 more sizable sinkholes. If after they blast, if sinkholes are discovered, we've built in a safety net to help remediate those issues. If they discover that something occurred, the sinkholes that already exist, we can utilize that same safety net to repair those. But we don't go into this knowing whether their blasting will create or damage those that are already there. We're assuming they won't, but we do have that safety net in place, it's on the. Thank you.
Do you all want to speak to the change order now, or do you want to speak to that later?
We can talk on now or later, whichever.
Do you want to hear it now, or do you want to hear it at the change order time? While we go ahead and do that, and that way when we get to the change order, they will already have the information to be able to support the decision.
So I'll receive the PR, West from Buffalo's in a car to get some additional pricing on for additional storm drainage on the church side of the property. What, I guess what the process will entail is we'll move, we're moving a head wall approximately, I can't remember how many feet, add some additional piping. Upsides of the head wall is flowing into, what this will do is help alleviate the water, that's I guess, punning up in Lake Air, I guess, is what we call it. So what it's going to do is help, we're going to be able to lower the head wall now from the original documents, and that will help us be able to take more water in faster than what they're drawing, so it's not going to fully resolve the issue on that side, but it is going to help eliminate a lot of the water concerns.
So this came after a meeting with the church, they wanted, the school to basically want us to come out and meet with them again. They had the church to express some concern with some of the remediation that we already asked us to do, the approach that we took. We readdressed that to essentially, it will drain, it's just, if it drains the site, it won't drain it quickly. As in, you know, as soon as it rains, it's not going to be all, it will reduce the amount of time it holds water, but it will not immediately produce the water over the course of a couple hours. It will take some time for doing that so that it doesn't flood the system down below the school. So we had to kind of balance those two needs out. So we are taking, pulling more water off of that site, and we're doing it in a pace that is a little slower, a smaller pipe, pushing it through our system now so that it doesn't create concerns farther down. It should still reduce, I think, in this glass water, right, about months ago, the church mentioned that their area held water for about three days. We think that's uncut in half, if not better. The work that we're doing here, because we're taking more of that water, we're just, we can't remedy the solution immediately because then it negates all the work we're doing by building the detention basin on the other part of the pond. So we had to balance those two acts out, and this is what this does, the church, they said time to review what this was going to do for them. They came to an agreement, they were appreciative of the fact, and when we had repriced, the overall cost was not substantial enough that we would oppose making this all change, we'll see that in front of you later.
So we have posted for you our personnel changes. We are not yet posting anybody who's turned in a retirement, we'll do that later. These are people who have taken action right now, so you can be updated on that.
Item three is reports, and item A under reports is taking forward this catch and update by Ms. Joanne Stevens.
I'll start by saying anytime that you would like an update on the construction. My room has a beautiful view of the outside, to watch all the dirt moving. And we knew there was a big meeting today, because we saw all the traffic, so now I'm in the lot. But I do think I hear the construction noises at all times now, but we've learned to just ignore them and keep going. But you're welcome to come see us anytime, it is exciting. And so we met in February, which seems like a long time ago. This meeting was in Frankfurt, so we were at our pretty building. And we started by addressing Senate Bill 59. So this happens last year in the 22 session, and it worked on the post-secondary readiness for students. And there were some big changes in that bill, like for me personally, the one that affects me, that first bullet, is that students used to have to meet an English benchmark, a math benchmark, and a reading benchmark on the ACT. Now they just have to meet one of them, so that is a big shift there. And it recognizes students who get dual credit, pass a dual credit class. It recognizes students who earn a passing score on advanced placement. And then we also have our industry certifications. And the one that's highlighted is the one that board was consulted on and needed approval, and that was on our work-based learning. And that if students complete an apprenticeship, that they can be deemed post-secondary ready based on completing that internship. And so this work-based learning manual, at the time I made this presentation, this was a draft, but it was supposed to go live on March 7. But it does give information to the district, also to the companies where the work-based learning is occurring. As a math teacher, I don't, I don't do any colops, but several of my students do colops. As a math teacher, I don't, I don't do any colops, but several of my students do colops. And this year, I've had the unique experience that one of my calculus students is co-opping with my husband, Ethan, at Vantage Engineering. So it's been neat to share, to share a student, that I know that my student is learning a lot of calculus in my classroom, but the amount that he's learning on the job and with that experience, it's very valuable. And I know that it's preparing him for what he does after high school. To be post-secondary ready, it is 300 hours must be completed, which, that is a lot, when you break down and do the math. They can do it over two years, so it's designed that they could do their internship, their junior and senior year. It was a big discussion, they can only count hours they work on a school day. So if they do work over the summer, that cannot count for the 300 hours, a school break can't count. But if they work beyond like 3:00, 3 o'clock, and they work till 7:00, those hours can count. So anything that happens on a school day can count towards that 300 hours. So this is a new little thing that they're phasing in with that. And the manual does have some beneficial information in there. As always, we spent a lot of time on our United We Learn, hearing an update from that. We did hear from two consulting organizations, and it focused on transitioning to the competency, competency-based model. So they spent a lot of time showing us the need to do something different, that what we're doing is currently not working. As we, and these are national numbers, these are not specific to Kentucky. But looking at our graduation rates, our remedial courses, so like right now, Kentucky benchmark for math is a 19 on the ACT, but colleges wants you to have a 22. So if we don't have a 22, students have to take a remedial class in college. So that's in addition to their major, their general studies, it's extra classes. And we can see that students who need to take those extra classes aren't completing their path. And then we look at our career readiness, these are things that we want our, we want our citizens to have when they're looking for jobs, and, you know, there's weaknesses there. So this is kind of like pushing the need, the why, for why we need to do something different. This table was very helpful for me in looking at the difference between, like when I say competency-based education, like what are we talking about? And it broke it down, and this is just a summary, there's definitely a lot more in-depth on each level, but you can, I won't read that to you. There's some things that, like, we're already doing. Like for me, I have focused a lot on grading and how I can, how can I make grading valuable to student learning in my classroom? But the assessment system would be very different for the state if we're looking at moving towards that competency-based model. And remember that the competency-based model, that is what the million-dollar grant is that KDE receives, so that is what they're striving to get to. And so this is from a different consulting firm, but they just kind of show the cycle that we've been in with our current assessment system. As a teacher, it's not very valuable for me that my students take the state test in May. I don't see those results till October, when I have a different set of students, and I don't see the test until sometime during the winter months, I get to see the questions that the students had. So it's hard for me to use that data. One, I don't still have those students, and two, it's just, it's, we've moved so far past it. So how can we make an assessment where we receive that data quicker, so that we can react to it, and it can improve student learning? So that's another reason to look at a different system. And based on the United We Learned meetings and the committee, you know, focusing on these three bullets, that we want, you know, districts to learn from one another instead of competing. We want educators to use valuable data sources to improve learning. For me, that's the big thing, is that if we're assessing students, it should be helping their learning, and it should be valuable. And wanting districts to partner together, so that would mean districts, like districts surrounding us, but it also means within our district, our families, our communities, working together, together to help our students. Just looking for, I think they keep using the phrase shared responsibility that we're looking at there. These were five models. Like, I agree with all this, I know we need to change what we're doing, but it's hard for me to wrap my head around, it's like, what does that really look like? What's this new assessment? If we're not giving students a standardized test, what are we giving them? What are we using for our accountability? So these were five different models. We're not doing, I mean, we're a long way from saying which model we're doing, but then we discussed all five of these. My vision is not good to see which one, but I think it's example one, talks about students providing a defense, and that would be their portrait of a learner. So they're showing, how have I been creative? How have I collaborated? How have I been a team player? How have I problem solved? Almost like a portfolio, but they are calling it a defense. And I know in our last board meeting, there's a student who has an internship at KDE, who goes to Frankfurt Independent Schools. And on that day, like, they didn't have school in Frankfurt, it was a staff workday, because students were coming in to do their defenses. And so that way, they could get feedback and make modifications if needed before graduation. So it's, it's just a whole different mindset. But the students do present themselves, and they have to have the evidence that they can accumulate it from any class, from any grade level, that they're displaying. And these would happen at all levels, it wouldn't just be a high school thing. There's different things that are combinations of kind of what we're doing, but adding in different things. There's things that kind of remind me of like our portfolio system that we have, where districts would be evaluating it themselves. But we are, what I try to keep telling myself, we're a long way from this being what we're doing. So we keep saying 2026 will be a field test, so we have time to develop it. So I'm optimistic about it, I am still curious about really what this is look like, but it, I do think it, it can be a game changer for us in improving student learning and improving the graduates that we have. The subcommittees, there's three subcommittees for United We Learn, they meet frequently, and so they send out a monthly newsletter that we get, they also have a webpage with all their updates, and then those three committees are all coming together at the end of April to kind of show what they've been working on, where they are in their work. We do have a pretty graphic for the portrait of a learner now, so this is our statewide portrait of a learner. So those are the things that when students complete their K through 12, that we would hope that they would be able to display evidence from those six things. And then the next screen has all of like a description from each one, just kind of elaborating on what that terminology means. Our next presentation was from Advanced Kentucky. So this is initiative from the Kentucky Science and Technology Corporation, and they do a lot of work with STEM, but they also include English, so it's, it's really math, science, and English is what they focus on. I have been working with Advanced Kentucky since 2018, so I was very familiar with this. So I just wanted to share with you all what Advanced Kentucky does for Garrett County. So they try to encourage more students to go into STEM fields. So we are a part of their AP Calculus program, so they help fund AP exams, which those are over $90. The state has made, reduced those to $10 since the pandemic. But Advanced Kentucky covers that cost. If a student passes the exam, they give the student $100, which is a nice incentive. And they also provide those incentives to teachers for students' performance. And then they also provide, they provide a lot of training. And I know, like, I had been teaching 10 years when I started teaching AP Calculus, so I hadn't had calculus for over a decade. And so they provide training that's needed for teachers, like, I needed that refresher in how to teach, you know, a subject I hadn't had in a long time. But then they also compensate teachers for their time. So not only are you learning new skills, but they, they pay, which is a nice, a nice little bonus. And then in April, we have an AP Day, they host at Eastern. So this is my 13th year of teaching, and this is my first field trip I'm ever taking. So we are going to Eastern, where they will have kind of like a conference style, where students can go to like an AP Calculus review session, an AP English, AP Bio, just to get kind of refreshed and to hear a different voice, to get ready for their AP exams. So right now, AP Calculus is the only class at Garrett that participates with Advanced Kentucky, but we hope that AP Precal is a new course next year, and so we're hoping that we can add that to our mentorship with Advanced Kentucky. We did start talking about the budget, so this was all new to me, I had to do lots of learning. But in October, the board, or KDE, will submit their final review for the 2024 to 2026 budget request. There is a huge concern from KETS about their money, that during COVID, we made lots of advancements with technology, we used a lot of ESER funds, with no more ESER funds, they're very concerned about maintaining this technology of keeping of devices, of networks. And so they are, they need a lot more money than what they have been getting. And then the annual budget request, things that we always need, professional development, instructional resources, and content standards, so all of our standards have to be reviewed. So like in, for math, I know that we, the standards we used were adopted in 2019, and we're on a six-year rotation. So in that 24 to 26 budget request, we'll have to have money for revising the standards. And then the Read to Succeed, which did get some attention with the bill, I think it was this week, but that will need money for that initiative as well. February was CTE month, so we did have lots of representatives from CTE speak to us. I took home a carload of things from different ATCs around the state, so those were just some of the things that I brought home. The class, my class enjoyed the top right, those are all items made with a 3D printer, and those were from Wayne County's ATC, but the students were showing off different things. And I know that you all saw a lot of that at your board meeting that you had in Mobile. We had a legislative report, which all of that has been, we've seen what's happened in the last few weeks in Frankfurt. Our student member on the board gave a presentation at our last meeting on school connectedness. It was a lot about teacher relationships with students, making all students feel welcome in the class to improve the school culture, the school climate, and student behavior. And then we also heard from the Kentucky Teacher of the Year. So we talk a lot about United We Learn, we talk a lot about deep learning. So we already have moments of this happening at Garrett County High School. So my students are developing apps right now, so it is relevant to them. You can see there, some of them are silly about building your own burger. We have a guesser for MLS teams, so a soccer player made this. And then we have like a Fazoli's, you know, you can see how much your bill would be with tax, without tax. So we have these moments happening. Computer science, it comes a lot more natural for me to embed things that are meaningful for the students. Algebra is a little harder, but when we study probability, we kind of pretend that we're all on the Titanic, and we, if we have a passenger named A. Smith, what's the probability they survive? And then each student gets a actual name from the Titanic, and based on the data, based on their class, their gender, their age, you know, we calculate the different probabilities they survive. And we use that throughout the unit as we introduce different types of probabilities. So we have these things occurring to get student engagement. It's just hard to do, and it takes time to do, and it's, it's just a different shift in our mindset, that it takes longer to teach like this, but the students are more engaged. So shifting to that instruction, it's very beneficial, but it is time-consuming as well. And then, do you all have any questions?
I tried to build my own burger, but it didn't work.
It didn't work? Although, right now, working on their apps that they submit to college boards, so it's a little stressful right now in class, but.
Well, thank you. Y'all have any questions?
So we have, we're participating in Advanced Kentucky's math, what about the science class? Are there projections that, so that this might be wrong?
They might, so when Advanced Kentucky, they're mainly for new teachers that are teaching, like, so our AP English teachers have been teaching so long, they don't qual, like, I don't qualify for computer science. I'm actually, I'm a mentor for that class, but where I'm a new teacher for calculus, it works. I think this might be my last year. The science teachers, some of them will qualify, I think we just got a late start this, you have to apply in the spring, and so the hiring, we don't hire until the summer, it's hard to get into the program.
It would be interesting to see how well our strategic plan for our district aligns with, I think it was the United We Learned presentation that you gave, and the competencies listed there, how well would we align with that, and do we align with the ethic that we do? Some of it does align well, but there's parts that I don't think we do, we're not aligned with it very well, so that might be something that we should look at.
I think it's something, and then, you know, after every meeting, I have all these thoughts in my head, like, you know, in math class, I focus on the collaboration, the critical thinking, the problem solving, the perseverance, but like the creativity, you know, for me, I'm thinking, how can I get more creativity in my math classroom? Like, I'm thinking of how, you know, in, in at least a week's time, how can I embed all those six things in my class? And it's, it's made me a better teacher thinking about, and I know my students are, not only are they better mathematicians, they're just better people when we try to embed those six things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item B is treasure report. I think all of y'all had an opportunity to go over that with our treasure. Item C is bond potential up to date.
So your bonding potential that we received back at the beginning of this month was 35 million. Interest rates had gone up again. I received a call this week that suggested that interest rates had gone down because of the banking crisis that had occurred last week, nothing in writing, just, but I wanted to make you aware that Bear reached out to me on Monday, suggested that they had already seen rates come down, so that it didn't suggest they're going to stay there forever or anything like that, but your numbers could be different today than they were at this point. So, but this is what they were at this time.
That helps your way from your office forward with the bidding process, does it settle the bonds, do you think?
So they said, open bid, open business, we were open bids, they were looking at the bond selling, Matt?
All right, thank you all. Item D is SRO report.
I'll just project from the back, if that's okay. So for the month of February, we had 30 proactive interactions, six reactive, and continuing with the eight deficits. We've had a bit more interaction with child protective services, with parents, as well with students. And most of them have been positive, and most certainly, a couple of them have been exceptional situations. However, we are making sure that the children's needs are first, and that they're getting the appropriate attention and help that's needed. As far as the deficits, we are actually chipping away on that. By the end of this month, all the SROs will be going through Stop the Bleed program, which has been sponsored by the Health Department. We will actually kind of be the resident experts in the Stop the Bleed. So we will be going through the train, the trainer, where we become the experts, will be able to bring it back. We'll be able to bring it back into each one of our schools and teach the staff how to control bleeding. Of course, this would be during an active shooter situation, better prepared than sorry. So we're looking forward to being able to bring that training back to Garrett County School System. I'll be away for all of next week. I'm actually going through SRO two training. And I'm going to have my other fellow SROs kind of fill in and pay visit to CDR while I'm absent. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. If I could interject something here, Sergeant Miracle referenced it slightly, and probably not enough because it involved him and some work that went on. Uh, our SRO team did a great job collaborating with the county police force or sheriff's office to provide some very needed services for some students. At one of our schools, they worked to get some, some efforts from PCBS, and it hadn't worked out, but they refused to allow a negative response or a no response to remain on the books. And some students who were in desperate need of some assistance received that because of the work that the SROs put in to making sure those kids are taken care of. And then, again, being willing to collaborate with other members of the law enforcement network across the county. And we just wanted to say thank you to, for them, to them for the work that they did to take care of our kids.
Thanks, Sergeant. Item A is bills as presented.
You all receive, you you all receive bills every week. This is just the collection of that. I'll always try to point out, I I forget to do it frequently, but anybody who's watching this has the capability going to our website, pulling up any of these documents and seeing exactly what the district does financially on a monthly basis and that you all see and get over with.
All right, thanks, sir. Item four is a consent agenda, not a whole lot on it. And unless anybody wants to pull anything out, I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Dr. Lamb made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Smith, second. Do you have any questions? All in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. All board members were in favor, the consent agenda is approved. Which brings us to item five, which is our action agenda. And A is to approve pay application for the high school student athletic bills and facilities.
You have two items to pay this month. One is pay application of three for seven over move, which is ninety thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. And for our construction management of Trace Creek, twenty-four thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty-three cents, this has all been approved. Uh, this is work that's already been completed. It's my recommendation that you approve these pay applications for the GCHS student athletic bills and facilities.
You heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Hart, second. Do you have any questions? Davis, second. Do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. Item A is approved. Item B is to approve the change order at the high school Phase Two plan.
This was the information that we shared with you earlier about change to the Phase Two plan that was already in place. And that total, let me pull this up real quickly so that the number is in front of you. I think I shared the number with you earlier this week. Uh, the total amount is thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars based on our desire to be a good neighbor to the the church. And based on that cause, my recommendation to you all is that we approve this change order for the GCHS Phase Two plan.
Thank you, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I approve the change order to the Phase Two plan.
Thank you. Mr. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart, second. Any questions?
Yeah, I actually have a question before we go through the final thing here. So on the change order or increase in the pipe size, has that been talked to AGU about running through their hydraulic analysis for that? So it's not.
They reduced the hydraulic analysis, so we reduced the overall pipe inlet size so we could minimize the hose size in our pipe structure system.
Open an engineer with no access. Anybody else? All right, all in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. All board members were in favor. Uh, item B is approved. Item C is approved. BG three is the high school plan.
Currently, because of what's in existence with options available to districts, it's not a requirement that we submit a BG three. But if it's a recommendation from your architect and construction management, then we go ahead and do that to make sure KDE stays fully informed of the process. We think it's the last thing to do. Uh, it's a bit of a technicality that we're going through. It's not a cost of any kind. It's just notification to KDE that this is where we're moving forward. So it's my recommendation that we approve the BG three for the GCHS model base.
Thanks, sir. You heard the recommendation, and thank you for that explanation as well. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the BG three.
Dr. Lamb made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Hart, second. All in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. All board members were in favor. Item C is approved. Item D is to approve elimination of two special education par educator positions.
So there are two positions at Garrett County High School that are very challenging to to keep fully employed. And the the director of special education has worked with the principal and the leadership team in the high school. They would like to eliminate these two positions. And then you will see in the next item, convert those two, put them together, and create a teaching position that they that they believe would be an easier hire. So it's my recommendation that we eliminate these two positions for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year at Garrett County High School.
Thanks, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the elimination of two special education par educators.
Thank you. Dr. Lamb made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Smith, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. All board members were in favor. Item D is approved. Item E is to approve the creation of a new special education teacher position.
So this is a continuation of what you just did. And in item D, the funding from those two positions that you have eliminated can now be directed into a one teacher position for the high school. So it's my recommendation that you approve the creation of a new special ed teacher position at GCHS for the twenty-two, twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Thanks, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I approve the creation of a new special ed position at GCHS.
Thank you. Mr. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Dr. Lamb, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. Item E is approved. Item F is to approve creation of additional six-hour food service position at Camden Robinson.
So in in addition to that, the next four items that we're going to look at are all related to the food service and an adding of staff at various locations in in the district. Uh, tomorrow is here, so if you have questions for her, you'll be able to ask her. Uh, but these are positions that are needed based on the amount of service that is done at each of our facilities. And this will allow a more effective work by our staff for our students. These are also funds that come from food services. It's not a general fund request. She has done all of the labor necessary and has worked with Ms. Coffey to make sure that the numbers are right. Uh, she has enough funding for this, so over the next four, we'll look at each of them individually. This one is for CDR. You see that the cost for that's eighteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and thirty cents for next year. It's my recommendation that you approve the six-hour food service position at CDR for the twenty-three, beginning with the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Thank you, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Dr. Lamb made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Davis, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. All board members were in favor. Item M is approved. Item G is to approve creation of additional six-hour food service position at the middle school.
Uh, based on the information I shared with you previously, again, this is an eighteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollar spot that will be funded by the food service budgets. My recommendation that you approve the six-hour food service position for GMS beginning with the twenty-three, twenty-four school.
Thanks, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I approve the creation of additional position at GMS.
Thank you. Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart, second. All in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. All board members were in favor. Item G is approved. Item H is to approve creation of additional seven-hour food service position at Lancaster Middle.
Lancaster does a little bit of additional work supporting our students here in in the mornings and in at lunch for our preschool. Uh, so this is a request for a seven-hour position. It's twenty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. It's my recommendation that you approve this seven-hour food service position for LES beginning with the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Thanks, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Hart made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Smith, second. All in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. All board members were in favor. Item H is approved. Item I is to approve the creation of additional five point five hour food service.
So it's an additional half hour to be added to the existing five and a half hour position, making that a full six hour position. Uh, a little bit of the hope here is that it makes it a more attractive position for someone. And just like we talked about frequently, these are always challenging positions to fill. This is a one thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and nineteen cents. My recommendation, you approve this additional half hour a day food service position at LES for the twenty-three, twenty-four school.
Thank you, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion? Second. Mr. Hart made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Davis, second. All in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. All board members were in favor. Item I is approved. Item J is to approve early posting of special education teaching position due to October of twenty twenty-three retirement.
We have a teacher who's going to retire at the very end of September, so we've listed that as October. Uh, rather than try to hire a position at that point in the year when we're already into the school year and the individuals would have already been picked up, uh, we would like your permission to go ahead and post this position. Allow us to continue to pay the individual who will be retiring, use them as a special education substitute in their current building uh, to support us throughout basically six weeks. So it's my recommendation that you that you approve this early posting so that we can hire in in the hiring season.
Thanks, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I approve the early posting in special education.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Dr. Lamb, second. All in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. Thank you. Item J is approved. Item K is to approve adding of middle school drama coach position.
Uh, the high school and the middle school work together in the world of drama. And that's probably not phrased very well, wasn't it? There's, there can always be drama in our schools. I probably shouldn't have said it quite like that. They work together to do drama performances, uh, and that's something that they do together. But we have only funded a position at the high school. And that seems to be an inappropriate decision on our part. So I would like to see us create a drama coach position for Garrett Middle School, paying the same stipend that we have for Garrett County High School. And we would pay for that out of our general fund. We're capable of doing that. Uh, so it's my recommendation that you approve a GMS drama coach position beginning with the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Thanks, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion with no drama, please?
I'll make a motion with no drama.
Thank you. Dr. Lamb made the motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
With no drama. Mr. Davis, second. All in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. Item K is approved. Item L is approved, adding a system, drama coach position at the high school and the middle school.
So you wonder why we would do this. Currently, there are three individuals who are working with our students in the area of drama. Two of those individuals are currently receiving no pay. So what we would like to do is instead of creating a third position that's at one of the other schools, create two half positions or assistant positions, one at each school. But the same individual could apply and be in a fully funded position. This position would be half of the nine fifty, so four seventy-five at each one. So it's my recommendation that we create two assistant drama coach positions, one for GCHS and one for GMS.
Okay, you heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion? Second. Mr. Hart made the motion. Do I have a second?
Before we second this, general public will.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, you, you, anybody have any questions? What if one person, the last vote, I guess they arranged where they.
So so there's nothing that requires them to be at one or the other school. So the work that happens in a drama coach position like this typically happens after hours. So that's when that work is being done. Uh, I do know that the high school is considering making an offer to the middle school to see if they would like to join them during the day for courses that they have there, which would be a way for our middle school students to receive this opportunity without it being an additional cost to anybody other than the transportation that goes on and the good work that.
Thank you. Anybody else? All in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. All board members were in favor. Item L is approved. Item M is approved, dividing the district, district athletic director position.
Currently, we have a district level athletic director position that is handling both Garrett County High School and Garrett Middle School. And it's an overwhelming task to do that. It was a little bit easier to do during the world of COVID because things were different. Uh, but I believe in the best interest of both of our schools, we should separate this and create two positions. Uh, we currently are spending twenty-five thousand dollars, asking to keep the Garrett County High School position at twenty thousand dollars and to do the Garrett Middle School for seventy-five hundred, which would be an additional two thousand five hundred dollars based, uh, higher than what we currently do. Uh, we went back and looked to make sure we weren't using that money already in some place. We are not. So this is an actual request for an additional two two thousand five hundred dollars if we do a split. So it's my recommendation that we divide the athletic director role into two positions, one for Garrett County High School, one for Garrett Middle School.
Thank you, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Second. Mr. Hart made the motion. Do I have a second? I'll say.
Mr. Smith, second. Do you all have any questions? All in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. Item M is approved. Item N is to approve a memorandum of understanding for the JAG program for Garrett County High School for twenty-three, twenty-four school years.
The next two items are both connected to the JAG program. Garrett County High School has a JAG program. It's had it for a few years. Uh, last year, we added a JAG program at the middle school. Uh, we're one of the five schools, uh, middle schools to have that. So each year, we're going to have to approve in the MOU a memorandum of understanding to make sure that we are in compliance with what the JAG program expects and that they are in compliance with what we expect. So on this motion, I'd like to recommend that you approve the MOU for JAG at Garrett County High School for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Thanks, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Dr. Lamb made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart, second. All in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. Thank you. All board members were in favor. Item M is approved. Item L is to approve the MOU for JAG program at the middle school.
On this one, I'd like to recommend approval of the MOU for the JAG program at Garrett Middle School for the twenty-three, twenty-four school.
You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I approve the MOA for the middle school.
Thank you. Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second? I'm Richard Smith, second. All in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. All board members were in favor. Item M is approved. Item B is always better than this one. Item to approve donation from First Southern National Bank for Garrett County High School football.
Just a reminder to the board that our principals can accept donations without coming to you. If they're below a thousand dollars, once they hit that threshold, we need to come to you and ask for your permission. First Southern National Bank has made a donation of five thousand dollars to the Garrett County Football Program. Uh, this is the second year for this amount of donation from them. It's my recommendation that you approve. It's my recommendation that you approve the donation from First Southern National Bank to the, for the Garrett County High School Football Program.
Thank you, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve the donation.
Richard Smith made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart, second. Did all in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. Item P is approved. Item Q is to approve donation from Juanita, is that Mason?
I believe so.
For Family Resource Center for a thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars has been donated to the Family Resource Center, which I think is a phenomenal donation from an individual. I think she needs to be recognized for having done that. We need to say thank you for that. But it'd be my recommendation that you approve accepting that donation for her to go to the Family Resource Center.
You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Thank you. Dr. Lamb made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart, second. Uh, and before we vote, we need to find a way to thank her, but I think this will be approved.
We will get it done.
We'll get it done. We'll get it done. All in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. Thank you. Item Q is for Dinamar is to approve donation from Wicker Bank for Garrett County High School football for one thousand dollars.
The softball.
I'm sorry, softball.
Uh, so again, we have a group of people to thank who are making available some money for our softball program. So it's my recommendation that you approve this donation from Wicker Bank for Garrett County High School softball program.
Thanks, sir. You heard the. Thanks, sir. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lamb made the motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Davis, seconded. All in favor, let me know by the way to hand. All board members were in favor. Item R is approved. Item S is to approve surplus of a mower and a bush hog.
These are items that we need to surplus out and then we'll do our best to sell them and get a little bit of money back to the district. So it's my recommendation that you guys make this mower and this bush hog for surplus.
You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the surplus of mower and bush hog.
Thank you, Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart, seconded. All in favor, let me know by the way to hand. All board members were in favor. Approved item T is the school at Garrett County funds policy update. This is.
This is first read, so there's no action on your part to do this. I just wanted to make you aware of what it is. More and more action is having to be taken financially by use of credit card. And what this is to do is to make sure that our policy is clear to everyone. It's implied, but it's clear to everyone that when you use credit cards, you follow the exact same procedures that you would for anything else, which is a line with Red Bull. So next month, we'll ask you to approve that, where we've actually placed that language in the policy. And you can see that policy through your own review.
Thank you, sir. And I believe that's it. The reason is, we're ready to adjourn then.
What is it? There's only this first read.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was a little bit concerned that we were going home and house. It's not really, we were hearing all these noises. Anyway, it's not.
And the plane that ran back there?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
No, it's crazy.
Chris and Roy saying. Mr. Smith made the motion, but then I seconded that, but we had some discussion about it.
Why did you go say?
This is late. This is, you know, ten seconds left on the clock. This is, oh. This is about SRO, and you're going for training for how long? I'll be gone for a week. A week? And you said that there's going to be people spotting down there. I'm concerned about that because that's amount of time that we have publicly announced that there are going to be some time, there's nobody there. And so I feel like that needs to be addressed and I really feel like we need somebody down there full time. Not somebody down there part time, but we need somebody down there the whole time that school's in session. But that's something maybe you can share with the chief and they can give back to us and let us know something.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I had the same concerns. I'm glad that you brought that up.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anybody ready to vote? All in favor, adjourn. All board members were in favor. We are adjourned. Thank you all so much. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate your patience.